Good afternoon. I'm Carolyn Rye, Chair of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, and the Administrative Informal and Workshop Session of this meeting of the School Board is hereby convened at 4:01 PM on this ninth day of November 2022. As always, members of the public are able to view this meeting on vbschools.com, broadcast on VBTV Channel 47, and on Zoom. And we do welcome any citizens here in person joining us. It's our protocol to break at 5:30 and no later than 5:45 to prepare for the formal session, which will begin at 6 o'clock. So with that, Madam Clerk, would you please announce those School Board members in attendance?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Present in School Board chambers are Chairwoman Rye, Vice Chair Melnick, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Franklin, Ms. Holtz, Ms. Manning, Ms. Riggs, and attending on Zoom is Ms. Owens.
Thank you. And let the record state that Mrs. Felton is absent from this workshop session due to a VSB commitment. She is, a reminder, is Chair of the Tidewater Region, but she will be joining us for the formal meeting at 6 o'clock. All right, so Admin Matters and Reports, colleagues, anything to share? All right then, it looks like we will head straight into our first workshop presentation of the afternoon, and we welcome Mr. Freeman.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Vice Chair of Members of the Board, Dr. Spence. So for the facilities update today, this one's going to be a little bit different than the traditional update that you've seen in the past. Over the past couple of years, we spent a lot of time on new construction, so I think we're relatively familiar at this point with the new construction part of it. And with any facilities organization that are responsible for as many buildings as we are, you know that HVAC roofs and foundations are an important element of how we maintain our buildings, and they're large dollar items. So we're going to spend some time talking about where we are related to those systems. And this is all in preparation for, as we enter the budget season, for how do we position ourselves as best as we can, look at the challenges that we have, and there's some opportunities that are in front of us as well that we can capture as we go through that. So with that, Melissa Ingram will walk you through the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Good afternoon, School Board Chair, Vice Chair of Members of the Board, and Dr. Spence. I'm looking forward to discussing with you today a snapshot of what we're working on in Facility Services and need to continue working on regarding facilities as it relates to the CIP. So we'll be discussing the adopted CIP fiscal year 2223 to 2728 today. In previous briefs to the Board, as Jack mentioned, we've concentrated with the CIP on new construction for school replacement projects, which is still a very important component of our capital improvement program in keeping up with the replacement of our aging buildings. In this brief, we're also going to talk about our larger renovation and replacement projects, which also require CIP funding. This includes the maintenance of our many assets in over 90 buildings. In terms of renovations and replacements, we'll discuss CIP projects that address HVAC roofing and foundations. These are major building components that help ensure a safe and effective learning environment for students in all of our school buildings. We'll be looking at CIP six-year funding as it relates to the life cycle of these building systems. So again, the intent of the Capital Improvement Program or the CIP is to address all needs throughout the school division. Listed are the major CIP projects dealing with facilities, renovation and replacement projects for a total of $21.3 million, which encompasses several projects: roofing, HVAC, grounds, energy management, and various renovation and replacement projects. You'll see below that Safe School Improvement Funds for roughly $200,000 per year, which assists in ensuring the safety of our schools and our sites. Energy Performance Contracts is also an ongoing project where savings are insured in the replacements that may be very energy-intensive, such as lighting, and these replacements also recoup future utility savings as a return on our investment in needs. So as with grounds and renovations, you can see we work with the city on, and Parks and Recreation, on our school playground equipment replacements as well, which is another CIP project you see before you. In terms of new construction, an achievable dream academy at Lynnhaven Middle School, which is a $13.85 million project scheduled to open in September 2023, with improvements also having been made to the front of the school as well in the interior commons area, which is adjacent to the addition. And then also programmed are our three school replacement projects: Princess Anne High School replacement, Betty F. Williams Bayside 6th Grade replacement, and Bayside High School replacement project. As we've discussed with this Board over several briefs, we have been looking for the most cost-effective way of delivering these three school replacement projects as related to the PPA interim agreement process, which we last looked at with the Board in August 2022, where we saw approval for that interim agreement for the PPA. So our next slide shows the funding sources approved. You might recall this from your CIP books, but these were approved with the fiscal year 2223 CIP. And it lists various sources of funding from bonds to pay-go and reversion funding or cash rather than debt. As you may recall, there were two alternatives under consideration in fiscal year 2223. Alternative A, which is in front of you, included roughly $21 million of state construction grants, which is highlighted in orange for you, where alternative B did not. We were fortunate, as a school division, to receive these state construction grants funding, however, we received $5 million less than programmed, of which the current reversion process is working to make this whole. This extra funding through state construction grants had a large impact on our total funding for this fiscal year, where we have been, in most recent years, in the $60 million range for funding. We were able to have that increase this last fiscal year to the $80 million range. Also itemized as a funding source, you can also see the commitment that the school division has made in terms of increasing pay-go money through our six-year capital improvement program, therefore being able to make replacement projects without incurring debt. Also funding the CIP is the use of reversion funding, which is one-time funding that is able to be put into the capital improvement program, limiting debt taken on through this program. In years past, we were funded roughly $40 million per fiscal year. We are now funded at roughly $60 million per fiscal year. However, you can see in our outer years, highlighted in yellow, we're unfortunately not keeping up with the inflation of roughly 5% per year on school construction costs that has been realized from past education construction projects. So this is another look at that same funding source table in graph form, and you can see on this graph, CIP funding sources per fiscal year compared with a linear red line of 5% inflation. So in blue is shown the division's historical CIP funding, where, as mentioned in the last slide, you can see several years where the capital funding dipped to roughly $40 million per year. Our current CIP fiscal year 2223 is outlined in orange, which reflects the one-year increase by our state grant funding opportunities. And in green, the projected funding approved with the fiscal year 2223 CIP, you can see that the funding here unfortunately relatively remains flat in the outer years related to inflation, which is that red line. So from this graph, you can clearly see the diminishing buying power that we have to maintain our facilities since the early 2000s, as construction and maintenance costs have increased over time. Okay, so again, looking at some of our new construction, considering the funding limitations and the impact of inflation on our ability to maintain and replace our facility assets, the school division is currently exploring another delivery model for these three replacement schools in efforts to realize cost savings in terms of delivery efficiencies and cost avoidances of inflation. The three school replacement projects approved with the six-year CIP have been a part of PPA RFP, or Public Private Educational Facilities and Infrastructure Act, RFP, which began with an unsolicited PPA proposal in June 2021. The total of these three projects, CIP 1-015 Princess Anne High School replacement, CIP 1-028 Betty F. Williams Bayside 6 replacement, and CIP 1-029 Bayside High School replacement, is $428 million. The PPA process, RFP process, has resulted in a proposed PPA interim agreement for design services with public input and other associated work to get to a guaranteed maximum price for construction and a possible comprehensive agreement for construction. This proposed interim agreement has a not-to-exceed price of $15.4 million, which is roughly 55% of these schools' total design budget and 3.6% of their total project budget. The School Board has approved this PPA interim agreement on August 9, 2022. City Council approval has been deferred to February 21, 2022. Unfortunately, this deferral has resulted in delays to these projects in terms of both time and cost. As a result, we may see budget increases to these three projects, which had not been increased in the last two fiscal years due to our PPA opportunity for delivery. School staff will continue to work with city staff in understanding how this delivery model can work with our current debt capacity structure. So again, as mentioned in the beginning of our presentation, our new construction for whole school replacement projects is an important component of our CIP planning, which we just discussed, the three projects included. However, just as important are the renovation and replacement projects that address building systems in our over 90 buildings, 11 million square feet of space, and 1,900 acres of property that serve over 65,000 students within the school division. Our number-one priority in maintaining our assets is ensuring that our classroom and educational environment are safe and effective for the needs of our students and staff. We are working to keep up with our assets based on their life cycle, and we'll look at these three areas with you today: HVAC, roofing, and foundations. So our first renovation and replacement projects, HVAC CIP 1-01E, is geared towards maintaining various HVAC components throughout our facilities, from HVAC distribution, make-up air units that improve indoor air quality, and controls, to name a few. Looking at maintaining our HVAC systems at their average 20-year life cycle for our systems, it's estimated that we would have to replace roughly 30 buildings throughout the six-year replacement program. We would have to replace HVAC in roughly 30 buildings over the six years, addressing roughly five buildings a fiscal year. The estimated budget cost for 30 projects would be within a range of roughly $221 million to $368 million over six years, using current-year-dollar values without escalation. Approved CIP funding over the next six years from the 2022/23 CIP is $63.5 million, a little over a quarter of the lower range of our estimated needs over these six years. So this next slide shows a list of prioritized projects that are being planned, they're being planned for over the next six years with our $63.5 million funding in CIP. One of the benefits of the CIP process is the ability to work on these projects over several years, which is necessary for these larger replacement projects for scoping, design, building, and construction needs at the scale of these projects, both in full system but more often partial system replacements as HVAC goes. You can see our first several projects, the first seven here on this list identified, are in their completion phases this fiscal year, while five of the remaining 15 projects listed are going through the bid process now, which will result in construction contracts will be coming to the Board in the near future. And the remaining 10 projects are in various planning and design stages. Due to funding restrictions, in CIP appropriations being planned are only 22 of the roughly 30 buildings that we would like to address in a six-year CIP planning window. 10 of these 22 projects have at least a 50% grant match, which has allowed us to address 10 additional projects this fiscal year, or over the next six years of our CIP planning than we would otherwise not have had the capability to address. It is also important to note that this list is for planning purposes, and if bids continue to come in higher than expected, not all needs prioritized on the CIP planning list may be able to be achieved within the six-year capital program. So in summary, for HVAC CIP 1-018, again, we are projected to be funded roughly $63.5 million over the six-year CIP. We were fortunate to secure $24.5 million in grant funding, thanks to the collaborative efforts and expertise of our facilities, maintenance, and budget staff. With grant funding and CIP appropriations, we're at a total of roughly $88 million over the next six years. Again, however, looking at our CIP funding, we're at roughly a quarter or 25% of our six-year estimated needs for this replacement project, HVAC. Okay, so looking at our next CIP project, Roofing, CIP 1-019, life cycles on our roofs is an average of 25 years, meaning we would want to be replacing roughly 24 building roofs over a six-year CIP planning period. This would equate to roughly $87 million to $122 million in estimated budgets using current-year-dollar values without escalation. You can see that our CIP funding over the next six years, approved with the 2022/23 CIP, is $42.3 million, or roughly half of our lowest range for our six-year replacement needs estimated to keep up with lifecycle replacement needs for our over 90 facilities. It's important to note, as part of this conversation, we have several prototype buildings that were built to address growth that are currently reaching their life expectancy for their roofs. At the elementary school level alone, roughly seven are built 25 years ago, and 11 built roughly 44 years ago, needing first and then second roof replacements. Our talented maintenance staff have been upkeeping these assets in order to reach full life cycle as well as exceed their life cycle. So again, prioritizing roofing projects within the six-year CIP planning cycle with the funding level appropriated, and again, remembering that we are working through projects at several phases of their replacement cycle due to the multi-year planning and construction needs. We were able to plan for 18 projects and 16 buildings out of our total 24 that would need to be addressed to keep up with lifecycle replacement needs. As with HVAC, although to a much lesser degree of availability, we have again utilized grant funding on our roofing projects, with two preventative renovations made in the way of coating prior to full replacement of the roof being made. As you see with Bayside Elementary School listed here twice, one item being a preventative fix, coating, and one currently underway is a full roof replacement. So as with HVAC, as we've had grant opportunities in terms of air quality come out that we've been working with budget on, we hope to realize addressing the full list of these 16 facilities replacements. However, the grant availability right now for building envelopes is not as plentiful as those for air quality. We will continue to pursue this. And again, just as a reminder, we may not be able to get to the full list of these planning items that we've prioritized under this funding source due to construction increases that we're realizing on bid day. So in summary, for re-roofing over the six-year CIP, $42.3 million of CIP appropriations is planned, which again was supplemented with a $0.7 million grant funding, and this is roughly 50% of the six-year estimated needs based on our life cycles of our roofs. Okay, so one of our more important CIP projects in terms of assets that are able to be addressed is CIP 1-020, which is called VARIUS. We have numerous project types that are able to be addressed through the CIP projects, including one I will be talking about further on the next slide, foundation repairs. Other assets also relying on this funding source for replacements are ADA improvements, auditorium seating, bleacher replacements, both interior, exterior, carpet replacements, ceiling replacements, fire alarm replacements, gym floors, library media centers, lighting, locker removal, masonry repair, press box replacement, stage ringing, and emergency renovations. So you can see from, in terms of keeping up with our assets of life cycles, we're looking at an estimated need of addressing these assets in roughly 10 buildings over a six-year planning period, or roughly 11% of these assets across the division over six years. At this pace, roughly one and a half projects per asset a year, our estimated replacement budget ranges from $75 million to $97 million, again, in current-year-dollar values without escalation. So this funding source is responsible for nearly all these projects and is planned to be $19.65 million in appropriations over the next six years, or roughly a quarter of the estimated needs in order to keep up with these lifecycle replacements. So in our next slide, you can see our maintenance services team assesses our building systems. Some of our facilities, foundations have been further studied to look at for any possible repairs needed. Three facilities were identified to have foundation repair needs, which is not our usual in our area with high-water tables and issues like hydrostatic pressure to deal with. Any foundation repairs would work to ensure that we are keeping moisture away from our buildings and away from our foundations. We've completed, as you can see on the slide here, a successful project at Brandon Middle School in the 2016-17 school year, which had a project budget of roughly $600,000. You can see that the costs associated with these repairs are estimated to more than have doubled, coming in at roughly $9.4 million for the three buildings that we are currently studying. So in summary, our VARIUS CIP 1-020 has a total six-year appropriations of $19.65 million. This is roughly a quarter, approximately a quarter of our six-year estimated needs. One of the needs in this VARIUS project has a growing cost associated with it, which is foundation repairs at roughly $9.4 million, and that's roughly 48% of the total funding over the six years for just that one asset. We've received, again, on this item, $0 in grant funding, but just as with roofing, we will continue to work with our budget team to look for any building envelope opportunities that might be able to address foundations. So in closing, the Capital Improvement Program is designed to address all needs throughout the division, as you can see from the list of projects we reviewed earlier in the presentation. We have discussed some of our most critical needs that need to be addressed in order to keep us up with the health and safety of our aging buildings. While planning for new construction of full school replacement projects is important, it is equally as important to address these critical components and replacement needs of our facilities over their lifespans. We will continue to work with our budget office during this budget development cycle as we continue to look for both grant opportunities and funding sources, discussing that in order to look for ways to address our funding needs. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank all our amazing staff in Facility Services for their expertise, attention, and care given to our buildings, from Custodial Services, who is our first line of defense in maintaining our buildings, our Maintenance Services staff who work daily to upkeep all of our building systems and through effective maintenance help our division utilize our assets to their full life cycle and beyond in some cases, and our Facility Services staff who support the years of planning and construction needed to execute these larger replacement projects that we have been discussing. So together, our goal is to support our learning environments with our CIP program and these replacement renovation projects. And with that, happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, and we will start with Mrs. Melnick.
What is the likelihood of grant opportunities for some of these CIP replacements?
So we, as I've mentioned, we have been realizing our grant opportunities on HVAC, and that energy.gov through the Infrastructure Act, we've been working on that through the last roughly two to three fiscal years, and we'll continue to work through that, as you saw from our HVAC list. Those address air quality, energy savings. We just had another grant opportunity come out, which budget shared with us. That's $80 million of the roughly $500 million in the latest Infrastructure Act. So it's just the first phase of it. It does mention building envelopes in it. However, energy and air quality is also a very important component. So we'll continue to look at the resources that were given. Equally as important are state construction grants, we realized this last fiscal year as well, for any additional funding sources we can utilize.
And I've never heard the foundation repair or replacement. I mean, it's, I think every homeowner is facing that at some point, but gosh, we've never really talked about that, so that's a big, that's a big chunk.
It is, and you know, again, we ensure through these studies that our engineers are online and making sure everything is safe. But it's similar to when we do our roofing projects, we'll also have some coping or caulking that we have to maintain as we're re-roofing to make sure we're keeping our buildings watertight and waterproof. And so similar conditions exist sometimes underground, where we would, might have to, you know, help with some caulking and block and things under that, just to make sure. And then also just making sure that we're keeping that water away from the building is what we're looking at.
Yep, and so this CIP is far, is far bigger than the building, new buildings, and so it's, it's good to have this information out there. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Anybody else? All right then, we thank you very much.
Thank you.
So now we have Dr. Shubridge, and for our Canvas update, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairwoman Rye, Vice Chair Melnick, Dr. Spence. Thank you for having me this afternoon. I just wanted to provide the Board with an update of our implementation of Canvas as we move into Year One. So the first couple of slides, and I'll start with this, don't be overwhelmed, there's 26 in there, I promise it's not going to take us a long time. The first several are just a review of some of the things that we've already talked about regarding the learning management system in Virginia Beach. And again, this slide is just a reminder of why we made the change. Power School in 2021 informed us that not only did they purchase Schoology, they informed us that they were not going to maintain their assessment platform, and that was a big factor for us, in addition to the fact that the state was going to be providing Canvas for all school divisions for five years. We piloted Canvas last year in seven schools to start the process of moving over to Canvas as our learning management system. So before the pilot in 2020, my team started participating in Virtual Virginia and Canvas weekly calls, understanding the platform, understanding what its benefits could be for our students. In 2021, the Department of Teaching and Learning and the Department of Technology worked together to create what is called the Canvas Instance. Each division has their own instance. We worked on permissions, creating a Growing with Canvas course and a support site that we continued from the pandemic. If you remember, the Department of Instructional Technology, we created a go-to site for staff members for any of the user videos, for any of the help videos, we've maintained that and included a section for Canvas support. And we maintained meetings with the Instructure Implementation Team, so Canvas is owned by a parent company called Instructure. During the pilot school year, our elementary schools chose to start immediately, they didn't want to change in the middle of the school year. We had three pilot schools, Kingston, Providence, and Red Mill. We used the CE for E, the Canvas for Elementary course template. It's a simplified view for our youngest learners. The Department of Teaching and Learning, we had a lot of dialogue about how to support the teachers in making the transition to Canvas, and we built Blueprint courses, which put all of the curriculum documents directly into the teacher's Canvas modules. We learned very quickly from our pilot schools that this did not work for them, and they asked us to remove all of the curriculum because it bogged down their students' Canvas sites. In reflection, the Teaching and Learning team realized that everything we built that we put in there was part of, was a Google document already, it was already a Google doc. So why were we having them click to click to click when we could just make a Google site of all of their curriculum? And if you recall, two weeks ago, when Dr. Kelly presented to you, she actually took you into a fourth-grade language art sample and she showed you. So that's what we built, instead of putting it inside the Canvas module. So that's what we built, instead of putting it inside the Canvas modules for the teachers. One of the other highlights from our pilot schools was the creation of PLC courses built at the school levels for creating content. So at your last meeting, one of the questions that came up was a concern for teachers who needed to be offered to take time. The benefit of a PLC course is when you're building together, it's easily movable into your teacher's course. So if I'm at Salem High School and Jen has to be out, it's very easy for me to pull right from the Canvas course and put it into Jen's course for her students. We didn't have the same flexibility with the previous learning management system. So that PLC course allows for not only teacher collaboration and building, but easily transferring it into a teacher's course for students. Our secondary pilot schools included Great Neck Middle, Larkspur, Callum, and Kemsvill. They had the option for a second semester start. You have teachers that, in some cases, might be a one-off teacher. I'm the only AP physics teacher in the building. A little more time for them to build inside of Canvas. At Kemsvill High School, they had 60 teachers at the start of school who said, "We're all in." It was very exciting. They were very engaged. And the sixth grade team at Larkspur said, "We want to be all in." So they started at the beginning of last school year. Great Neck Middle School did a full second semester start. Larkspur had additional teachers who joined, and we gave all of the schools the option. So Callum had a much slower role than the others. We started working on the LTI integrations. And what that means is think about, you've got a website open. Instead of having to click outside to get to the textbook, it is embedded right inside of the student's Canvas course. So the student opens their Canvas course, they want to go to Chapter 8, they click on it, the book opens right there inside of their Canvas course. They're not going outside of it to have to find their way back into it. And that was a major selling point for us moving away from the previous learning management system into Canvas. All of our textbooks embedded in Canvas seamlessly. They did not in the previous learning management system. We also tested and used Grade Pass Back in the second semester. If you recall from the previous learning management system's evaluation, one of the pieces requested most by secondary teachers was the ability to do Grade Pass Back. We were not able to make that successful previously. And in a slide in a little bit, I'll show you how successful we've been with Grade Pass Back for our secondary teachers. So one of the, we asked for a lot of feedback from our pilot schools, that opportunity for them to give us as much as possible that was going to make it easier for all of the teachers starting in year two. We did a lot of work with better permissions control. We have a lot more coaches that have accessibility to be admin in buildings. We didn't have that previously. So the ITS, the LMS, the reading specialist can drop content in for a teacher if something is needed. We have more integrations with our third-party vendors, especially textbooks and resources, Brain Pop, some of those other, No Red Ink, some of those other products. We started working on course templates versus blueprint courses, and we've created a best practices documents for both elementary and secondary. And it looks like a checklist. It could be used like a checklist. It isn't meant to be a checklist. It's meant to be a thoughtful, what do I need to include in my course that's going to make it easier for my students and my families? Similar to what we did previously with the other learning management system, we had a green folder that had specific information. Those best practices documents were similar. We also have access to Canvas Commons, which allows teachers to build and share resources. So not only can we share within our division much easier, we can go out and see what other divisions have created. If you have a teacher is the only AP, I'm trying to think of a course that there's like one teacher, AP Japanese for something. I'm making it up. I'm sorry. Don't mean to make it up. But I'm just like, I can't off the top of my head. You can go out to virtual, to the course Commons and find another teacher who's also teaching that to see activities or assessments that they might have created, and you can pull that right into your course. We have access to all of Virtual Virginia, their content. Again, so if there's any of those higher levels, we have access to those resources. And both elementary and secondary teachers shared that even though copying, you could copy from the previous LMS, it was easier to open it and then replace the pieces you wanted. As a reminder, we have maintained our contract with the previous learning management system for the rest of this year to allow teachers the opportunity to move any of their materials over. It is not accessible to students, and so there's no assessments being given, and the teachers aren't using it for student interaction, but they have time to move their materials. So while we were doing the pilot school, there were three presentations to all of you focused on why we were making the transition. We did training for ITSs, and we shifted our professional development training into Canvas. We updated the Growing with Canvas course to be much more Virginia Beach friendly. We shared with pilot schools the learning, what pilot schools were learning during our monthly PD. We had multiple options for training, starting in February of '22, for all staff in the division. The Growing with Canvas training modules were put out in the principal packet memo at the end of February. There's the Canvas Training Services Portal. Virtual Virginia offered Canvas LMS Success Program meetings. They have them monthly. And then there's the Virtual Virginia Canvas for Beginners. Now, I want to share, before I go on to the, I can just say it, there's also multi-layers of support. It was a much more powerful support product, 24/7 chat, phone. You could type in a question and somebody could get on with you immediately. So a teacher who's working at 1:00 in the morning, I don't recommend it, but sometimes that happens, they could have access to somebody for support. I'm going to go back for just a second. I want to be clear that we recognize there was a moratorium on professional learning last year to give teachers space. What happened in some schools, though, was teachers asked for it. So teachers and principals worked together to figure out what that might look like. There were small groups. There might be one-on-one. But there were some teachers who said, "I know this is coming. I don't want to wait until the summer." So as we headed into the '22-'23 school year, our team created Camp Canvas. Very exciting. We had different learning trails for your level, elementary and secondary, and based on your readiness. We had, all of the sessions from Camp Canvas are posted on that Canvas support site. And if you were interested, there are some, we were featured in the Instructure blog, Learning Smore Together at Camp Canvas, and then Camp Canvas by the Numbers, if you are curious. But I do want to share with you a little bit of our reflection. And people at home, you might not hear the video. We were having trouble with the sound. There's only sound, like music. For the students, when they open it up, they've got cards. And each of those cards, you know, we've encouraged teachers, they can add the picture or whatever they want to say, so a student can easily find what they're looking for. And then one button over is their schedule, and what it does is it shows the students if there's anything planned on their schedule. So you can see for this student, on October 25th, they were going to have an assignment moving off the Capitol. So this is for a student to be able to see what's coming up in their week. The Resources tab, excuse me, which I don't have an example of, is really just all of the resources in Virginia Beach. Brain Pop, all of those external resources, and I didn't want to get into the water about all the stuff we have to offer. And so this was before we created the template for elementary. If you notice along that top navigation bar, all of those different buttons. And after feedback from all of our pilot schools, this is now what it looks like for students when they go into their teacher's course. You only have modules and resources. So when a student opens it, there's what they're working on in that teacher's course at the time. This is what a teacher's course view looks like. So if you notice, there are several navigation bars. So the far left is the Canvas navigation bar. That's in blue. That allows the teacher to move between Mastery Connect, their courses, their dashboard, or their, their own profile. The white, the one in the white is all of the pieces that I just shared on the data slide. Discussions, grades, people, assignments. That's where the teacher can navigate that. That is not shared. All of those are not shared with students. The teachers, and working very closely with ITSs, we narrated down and said, "What's most important to appear for the students?" The assignment part, anything that has a green check next to it is something that's already been published for a student. The one that has the, that's white with the line through it, they haven't pushed that out yet for students. Teachers can easily turn those on and off for students to be able to access and see what is available for them. This is an example of a teacher view in one of the PLC courses. So again, the teachers are collaborating on what are all those parts look like that's going along with Science 5.1.1. As they're building it, they might be pulling something from the previous learning management system. They might be pulling something directly in from the curriculum, from the curriculum resources. Each teacher can then go back to their class and drop this whole module into their class. No rebuilding, no redesigning. They don't have to make anything. They've already done it once. So in some schools where we have somebody who's in charge of math and somebody who does the science or social studies, especially at elementary, it's very helpful to be able to build together and then be able to copy it into their own course. For secondary students, I'm going to show you an example of what the user dashboards look like in secondary. There's a recent view, recent activity. There's the list view and the card view. Again, our pilot schools and our non-pilot schools worked very closely to discuss what course navigation should look like for our students. Even though we had the pilot, we call them CPITS, our Canvas pilot schools, our Canvas pilot ITSs, we still wanted to ensure that all ITSs had buy-in with the decisions that we were making for their teachers. So this is that activity view. It's very busy. But this shows all of the announcements. So if I was a teacher or a student, I can see everything that might have come through off of my dashboard. If you notice to the right side, there's a to-do list, and that identifies for the student very clearly what is due or what is coming up. The benefit of Canvas, one of our loves about it, is right beneath that it says Recent Feedback. Previously, in the learning management system, if a teacher gave feedback, the student would have to go in and try to find any feedback. In Canvas, it populates right there, so the student knows that they've been given feedback from their teacher and can click right on it. It'll take them right to their feedback from their teacher. This is the list view. Which one is this? List view. This is our list view. And again, similar to the elementary student, where you can see in each of my content areas, what do I have coming up this week? And then this is what the dashboard looks like with the tiles. I want to point out while we're on this slide, if you notice on the environmental science, there's a little note paper, and then there's also like a bullhorn. And then also, if you look at the English, the bullhorn has a one on top of it. That notifies, indicates for a student that that teacher has posted an announcement. And if there's something on their piece of paper, there's an assignment posted. So again, an easy way for a student to see when they're looking at their cards visually, what they might have something in there from their teacher. This is a secondary teacher's homepage. And Ms. Donahue is sitting here with us today. We're so excited. I wanted to share that our teachers in secondary have the option to change what their course homepage could be. So we have recommended that it's the, that is pages, that this is what they go to. But there might be some who want to go directly to modules, go directly to a syllabus. Each teacher at this point can make a choice about what is their course homepage. But again, this teacher has created, here is my indication of who I am. I'm Second Bell, Semester 1, Room 201, and I'm Spanish 1. Beneath that, the quick access links are those things that we've required, like your office hours or how to contact you, important information for the semester or the term. And the student, this is exactly what the student sees. But I want to just go back for a second. Do you see the teacher's white bar, white navigation bar on the left? How there are all of those different components? On the student view, students only have home, modules, grades, syllabus, resources. So a student does not get bogged down in all of those different choices on the navigation bar. Again, you can see their to-do list. You can look at the course content, the course calendar, any course notifications easily from the student's page. In secondary, we also have PLC courses and homepages. One of, an example I will give you is the, there might be in a middle school an Algebra 1 teacher, and that Algebra 1 teacher is often an isolate and has nobody to collaborate with. Working with Mr. Coker in secondary math, he has connected other Algebra 1 teachers in PLC courses. So you might be able to work with a high school that's next door to say, "What are you doing in Algebra 1? We can share things." They might build an assessment in their middle school that they can share with the high school folks and vice versa. So again, the opportunity of those PLC courses across schools, and especially an opportunity to support our isolates in buildings. Again, this is the student view. They've got their course cards, their to-do list. They can receive feedback and see what that recent feedback is. And again, as a student clicks into their modules, you can see, "These are all the things that are published and available for me." The teacher course might have five or six other things that have not been published. The student only sees that, which a teacher is ready for them to see. So a couple of teacher wins, things that were shared with us are that it's visually appealing and easy to navigate. Linking to class content, linking class content is very easy. Being able to search content from other teachers, including those that are teaching Virtual Virginia courses. I want to also share the Gradebook Sync has been powerful, the teachers that are using that. Now, we don't have 100% of our teachers even using Gradebook Sync at secondary, but those who are using it are appreciative that it's working smoothly for us. Our messaging ability far exceeds what we could do in the previous learning management system. And one of the pieces we do love as well is the all-staff-and-student courses. Makes it easier for advisory or academic and career planning or all class-level materials to be distributed to students in a very seamless way for information. Some of the student wins, again, that visually appealing. Students have commented on the assignments and the announcements and being able to see that to-do list right there as soon as they open up their home screen. The feedback from the teacher is appreciated because sometimes kids didn't even know they got feedback, and then it's right there for them to see it. for them to see it. Easy to see an announcement on the dashboard in the course page. Several students, I was at the superintendent student advisory group, and several students said they really appreciated the calendar tools, that the calendar, being able to see that, and it would cross out when they would submitted an assignment visually, supported their process. So next steps for us, we're going to continue training. There's things that we're uncovering that are positive for our teachers, we want to make sure that our ITSs are aware of that. We will have teachers and ITSs review our best practices and feedback document. We will continue to explore the course commons and how we can better utilize the resources that are out there, not only from the state, but also how can we build ourselves? How can we build full course shells and/or course modules to share across the division? We're going to work on that enhanced engagement based on feedback from students, and we're going to continue to work in a feedback loop with our Canvas leadership. We, I actually just was in a meeting right before this, we have a monthly call with our Canvas leadership on what's coming new, what to be ready for. And that is my update for you.
Thank you, Dr. Schubrich, and again, we'll start with Mrs. Melnick.
This is a lot, I know, I'm sorry.
And it's not you, but I hope, I tried to hide my deer in the headlight with my glasses, and it's so impressive, it is. And my boys have been doing this on the collegiate level for a number of years. And I know there was a learning curve for them. Honestly, how are we doing? How are our teachers doing with this? I was glad to see the continued training, it is a lot. What is the learning curve, do you think, for them? And?
Well, so I'll tell you this, I'm going to ask Ms. Donahue to come up, she can talk from a teacher's lens of what it was, what her learning curve was. But I will say this, in every place we've been, it is not a student learning curve. And one of the pieces of feedback I got when I was with Dr. Spence and the students was, really appreciate we went to Canvas, my college that I'm interested in, they use Canvas, now I have this, I would like my teacher to use Canvas. So like, I said, I said to the students, then help your teacher, like, help them. Sometimes, you guys know as much as your teacher does, so help them out. Right? Don't be afraid to say, can I offer you some support here? But do you want to share?
Yeah, I just, I mean, it's a lot. So like, I also am wondering, how long, like, is this going to take a year to really feel comfortable? Is it going to take two years? And yeah, how are we doing? Because I saw you nodding a lot, too, so, like...
Well, I enjoy Canvas a lot, and I tend to be a little bit more on the tech savvy side with it anyway. But some of my teachers who are not as tech savvy are jumping in on board. I think what we are, as long as we are talking to each other and working together, there are things that we're learning. One thing that I think was really beneficial for me personally, and a lot of the teachers, was having a template already built for us when we started the year. And so I think that's where having something to inspire us is helpful. And I think the other thing with Canvas that my brain has had to work on is rethinking how I approach my lessons and how I approach what I'm giving my students anyway. And so that conversation is having, being had with the teachers. So the tech side, as long as there's somebody who's willing to try and explore it, other teachers are jumping on board. But it just, it does take time. I think that's the biggest issue, is having enough time to really dig in and see how it's beneficial.
And do you think that Schoology was a good, a decent step into this, or is it so significantly different that the Schoology piece is out the window? And what training are we offering, and how are we offering that for teachers?
The Schoology side, I think it's kind of like comparing apples to oranges. I would say it's knowing a Windows computer as opposed to a Mac computer, that there are similarities, but they're so different that you can, as long as you know one, you can kind of figure out the other, but it's really hard to compare. I think Schoology, for me, it was very linear thinking, whereas Canvas is big-picture thinking, and that has helped me with the two. So it's nice seeing what I've done on Schoology, but I do have to rethink what I'm doing, and then...
Yeah, so I'll just share this. We, with our pilot schools, all of them got to about the eight-week, nine-week mark before muscle memory kicked in, that it was different, that it wasn't a folder structure. So like, Matt on my team talks about, like MS-DOS. So MS-DOS, you had folder structures where you found stuff. With Canvas, it is much more big-picture, and it is really about the student-teacher interactions. It isn't necessarily about the delivery of the instruction, or I'm going to put everything on there, right? So in subbing last year, a lot of the subplans said, have the kids open the Chromebook and go to Schoology and do all the things in the folder. Now it's much more about, why am I putting this in this folder for the student, and what are they doing with it? So one of the training pieces we talked a lot with our ITSs on is, how are the students creating? How are they collaborating? How are they communicating? That's what we should be focusing on with the use of the learning management system, not the deliverer of instruction, because that's what our teachers are for. And there's flipped opportunities, don't get me wrong, Khan Academy, again, praised by our students about how helpful it is, there's an opportunity to flip things, but again, when they're in this classroom, it's the teacher-student interactions that are critical, and then what's on the canvas is, how am I going to show my teacher what I understand and demonstrate my learning?
I agree.
To sum it up, the other, the training piece, so that's really become site-based, and that's really become, the ITSs, LMSs know their teachers, and know who are the early adopters, who are already moving, and who are the laggards who are going to wait until the very last minute. It's kind of like our toe-dippers with Schoology, and we had a pandemic that kicked everybody in. So those people, to Leah's point, are moving because the rest of their colleagues are also moving. So once early adopters are doing things and they're showing success, the kids are now asking for it. So the other teachers are like, okay, I've got to figure this out, too, because the kids know how to do it and are asking for it. Can we create something in studio? And the teachers are like, I don't know what that is. So, you know, how do we then get our ITSs in with those collaborations to help those teachers move that along? This is not, it's not going to be a two- or three-year process, but it is going to take us a year for teachers to let go of, in all ways, shapes, and forms, the other learning management system, and have everything they want ready to roll in Canvas.
And I do love, I mean, it is true, we do have to keep up with the kids, they are, yeah, that's part of our work, all right.
Mrs. Anderson.
Can you explain, I mean, maybe I should know this as an educator, but I don't. Can you explain more about grade passback?
Sure. So it's not at elementary, okay, we don't do it at elementary, because at elementary, we're doing standards-based grading, and it's by objective, and so that would be too much to pass back. So we don't do it at elementary. But at secondary, a teacher can assign something in Canvas and grade it, and that syncs, that grade syncs with our Synergy Student Information System gradebook. And so the teacher doesn't have to grade it in Canvas and then go into the gradebook and enter the grade, the grade automatically will go to the gradebook. So it saves a teacher some steps.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yes.
That makes a lot of sense.
Yes.
So, but I didn't actually know what that was, and that, you know, but now I know. Say thank you.
You're welcome.
Ladies, everybody okay on this end? Mrs. Riggs.
We keep getting classes and emails about Canvas. Is that the same things that we get it on our email? Is that the same things the teachers are getting?
Yes, are you getting notifications?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, if you would like to not get those.
No, 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 it's fine. I like to see that and say, and think, oh, okay, so if we're getting these, I'm assuming the teachers are getting these opportunities, too?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So I think that's great. Thank you, thank you.
You did an ask, and I will share, and maybe I'm oversharing, but I think it's important to know, we are working on the parent, the parent side of it. There was an issue with our Synergy system, not with our Canvas system. My team has figured out a workaround, and so we had somebody with an Android, and my, I used my iPhone, we found a way to connect, so I can actually pull up both of my children's Canvas on my phone. And so we're working on directions with the Department of Technology, so we can get those out to families. Currently, a parent could just go in with a student, exactly what the student sees is what a parent will see as an observer role. But we just wanted you to know that we are working on that piece for our community to be able to have access as well.
Okay, we thank you very much.
You too much.
So that can, this concludes our workshop, and we will reconvene here in Chamber 6 o'clock for the formal meeting. And Mrs. Melnick, would you please read us into closed session?
I move that the School Board recess into closed session in accordance with the exceptions to open meeting laws set forth in Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3711, to deliberate on the following matters: Discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body, and evaluation of performance of departments or schools of public institutions of higher education, where such evaluation will necessarily involve discussion of the performance of specific individuals; consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation, where such consultation or briefing in open meetings would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. For the purpose of this subdivision, probable litigation means litigation that has been specifically threatened, or on which the public body or its legal counsel has a reasonable basis to believe will be commenced by or against a known party. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on a matter. Consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on a matter, namely to discuss change in title for Director of Department of Internal Audit and status of interviews, disciplinary action and investigation statuses relevant to several employees, School Board Attorney Evaluation Instrument, and pending litigation matters report and status.
Second, Mrs. Anderson, all in favor, show a raised hand, please.
We have 10 ayes, the motion passed, to go into close.
Thank you.
The School Board of the City of Virginia Beach convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this School Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting or convened were heard, discussed, or considered. I do need a motion.
Motion to approve, Mrs. Anderson, and a second, Mrs. Haltz, all in favor, show a raised hand, please.
Madam Chair, we have 10 ayes, the motion passed.
Thank you.
Yes, and so before we leave, I move that the School Board change the title Internal Auditor, Director of the Office of Internal Audit, to School Board Internal Auditor.
Second. Mrs. Anderson, all in favor, a raised hand, please.
Madam Chair, we have 10 ayes, the motion did pass.
Okay, so now we are adjourned until 6 o'clock, thank you.